Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have two-minute limit on open public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move forward to approve the agenda. Aaron, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Pete?
Yes. Handicap parking. I don't know where it is.
Is that on Second Street?
Yep. Dr. Cavan?
Yes.
That's on there?
Because I got, I was gonna add the Second Street parking and then that curb cut. Is that what you wanted, or was it handicap, or both?
Well, both preferred if we can't get it done.
Okay.
At least one, one of the two.
Okay. Julie?
No.
I'm gonna add RS fiber.
On the K?
L. Dale, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
Nope.
Jenny?
I have lawnmower purchase, and then I would like to remove item D. Yep.
They gotta fold, huh?
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Seconded.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
I've got a comment on one of the things here.
On claims, or which?
Health insurance.
Go ahead.
I sat in on the health insurance. I think, Dale, you were there too?
No, I missed that.
I was there for a while.
Oh. And one of the problems that we've got with that thing is that they renew, like now, instead of the beginning of the year. So the people who have deductibles, if they were to change a plan or modify the plan, they lose all their deductibles. So I would like to negotiate with health partners that we renew the first of the year, like everybody.
Line it up.
Yep.
Yeah. Is that possible?
We can talk to our agent about it.
Should be able to.
All right. Is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion made by Bob, seconded by Dale. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No public hearings. New business, feasibility study, Hennepin-Carver. Good evening, Ryan.
So I'm here tonight to speak on the feasibility study that we prepared at the council's request in April last month. The city passed a resolution to prepare, or for ISG to prepare this feasibility study. The scope of the project is for utility and street improvements for two, two different streets that were identified by city staff as priority areas. And largely, that's because of the sanitary sewer crossings of State Highway 19. So the areas are Sibley County State 8 Highway 32, or Casaw 32, which is also Hennepin Street, from Second Street to Minnesota State Highway 19, which is also Fourth Street. So about two blocks of Hennepin Street. It also includes Carver Street from Second Street to Minnesota State Highway 19, which is another two blocks. The utility improvements we looked at include sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer reconstruction. This would include replacing individual services to the right-of-way. And then also, we looked at rerouting the sanitary sewer, excuse me, between Third Street and Minnesota 19 to the south to eliminate those Highway 19 sanitary sewer crossings. In addition to that, we also looked at adding subdrain behind the curb, and this aids in draining the street section, as well as providing an outlet for sump pump discharges. For the street improvements, we looked at full street, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and driveway apron reconstruction. The existing sanitary sewer in the project area is all eight-inch, except for one block of 10-inch for Carver Street between Third Street and Second Street. And the sanitary sewer crossings of Minnesota 19 are ductile iron pipe, they're not, they're not clay pipes. The manholes, excuse me, in the project area are brick-and-mortar construction. The age of the pipe, south of Third Street, for both are over 100 years old. Their, the records we have show that they were constructed in 1916. North of Third Street, the records that we have show that they were constructed in 1958, so that puts them over 60 years old. The area south of Third Street flows south to the First Street trunk line, and then the area north of Third Street flows to the A Street trunk, trunk line before they then discharge to that east side sanitary sewer interceptor pipe. Televising of the sanitary sewer was completed in 2014 and 2015. That was done to determine the condition of the pipe, as well as identify sources of inflow and infiltration, or INI. An inflow, INI and I are basically methods by which clear water enters a sanitary sewer system. Inflow would be any direct connections, such as maybe a footing drain or a sump pump connection, or even a manhole lid. Infiltration would be groundwater seeping in through pipe cracks, possibly some joints, some, some offset joints, or things like that. And then even those brick-and-mortar manholes, those are susceptible to INI infiltration as well. INI increases demand on the sanitary sewer system and the wastewater treatment facility, and it can contribute to backups within the sanitary sewer system. And it was identified as a problem in, in the comprehensive plan. Some defects that were found in the pipes from the, from the televising include protruding taps, fractures, longitudinal cracks, root intrusion, one longitudinal hinge crack, an offset joint, and some heavy deposits in the Minnesota 19 crossings. The deposits were so heavy in the 19 crossing that they were unable to fully televise the Carver Street crossing of Highway 19. And the almost weren't able to complete the Hennepin Street, Minnesota 19 crossing, they had to come in from both directions, and they were able to fully televise that crossing. In addition, they found one manhole on Hennepin Street that is missing a bottom, so I assume that that would be just a clay bottom in that manhole. And as I mentioned before, those brick-and-mortar manholes are susceptible to inflow and infiltration. The Hennepin Street, the worst, on Hennepin Street, the worst defects indicated failure was unlikely for at least 20 years. However, on Carver Street, the one defect, that longitudinal hinge crack, said it was likely to fail within five years. Now, keep in mind, this televising was done in 2014 and 15, so we're kinda coming up on that, that five-year prediction. Two defects in Carver Street were considered likely to fail within 10 to 20 years, and then the remaining were considered unlikely to fail for at least 20 years. The existing water main in the area ranges in size from four, four-inch to six-inch, and is believed to be ductile or cast-iron pipe. The age is unknown, but at least according to the records we have, but in talking with Joe Ziegler at, basically after we had finished the report, it sounds like they think it could be anywhere in the, maybe 100-year range, especially in that, that Third Street area. Six-inch water main is the current standard for minimum size, however, most, most places put eight-inch in because of, they have to meet residual pressure requirements. And that's basically the standard the city has been using on, on past projects. As far as storm sewer, the existing storm sewer is fairly minimal on the project. All of it is, is 12 inches in size. And for, for Casaw 32 or Hennepin Street, there's three catch basins and one manhole in the Second Street intersection that flows south to First Street, which then takes it to County Ditch 42. There are two catch basins at the Minnesota 19 intersection, which flows directly east to County Ditch 42. On Carver Street, there are two catch basins in the intersection of Third Street, and that flows west to the Main Street storm sewer, which then carries itself across railroad tracks before ultimately discharging to County Ditch 42. The age of the storm drainage is unknown, and the condition is, is considered to be in fair condition with no real significant concerns. As far as the condition goes, however, our preliminary calculation suggests it is undersized by current design standards. We calculated to have the capacity to handle a two-year rainfall event, which is about 2.8 inches. And on the most recent projects the city has been designing for a 10-year rainfall event or a 4.14-inch rainfall event. The existing city streets, they're both bituminous. Casaw 32 is approximately 33 feet wide with curb and gutter on both sides. The pavement condition is relatively good. There were some distresses observed, including longitudinal and transverse cracking. The curb ranges in condition from fair to good. For Carver Street, it's approximately 42 feet wide with concrete curb and gutter on both sides. Again, the pavement condition is fair to good, and similar distresses were observed, transverse and longitudinal cracking, block cracking, and some alligator cracking. And then there again, the curb condition on Carver Street ranges from fair to good. The sidewalk for both streets is on both sides of the streets. The condition for that ranges from very poor, I would say, to good. Some areas are experiencing some damage due to root issues and things like that. They do have pedestrian curb ramps at the intersection, however, some appear to maybe be out of compliance with current American, with Americans with Disabilities Act standards. The improvements that are proposed for sanitary sewer would be replacing all of the vitrified clay pipe with eight-inch PVC pipe. That includes the 10-inch, the existing 10-inch pipe on Carver Street, there really isn't a very big service area for that stretch, so we think it could be downsized to an eight-inch pipe from a 10-inch pipe, unless there was a reason the city sought to replace it in kind. And there again, as I mentioned, we're proposing to reroute the sanitary sewer between Third Street and 19 to the south, and then this would allow for abandonment of those Highway 19 crossings. Sanitary sewer improvements include precast concrete structures and replacing the sanitary services to the right-of-way. We generally recommend, and we have done it on past projects, that from the right-of-way to the homes that the, those services be televised to verify that they're in compliance with the city's ordinance regarding INI, to make sure that there's no foundation tile or sump pumps connected to those services. If you remember, the last feasibility study we did was for First Street, and that was essentially put on hold for the time being because DFA had mentioned that they had some potential expansion plans that would include expanding across First Street east of Hennepin Street. And if that were to take place, it would likely mean rerouting those trunk lines that go down First Street, and most likely that would probably happen, they'd have to be rerouted to the west, probably to Main Street, and then south across railroad tracks. So with that said, these improvements would likely result in the Casaw 32 sanitary sewer at Second Street being diverted west to Carver Street. And at that time, the manhole at the intersection of Carver Street would have to be replaced, it would have to be made deeper, and then a drop would have to be installed on the, to accommodate the, the sanitary sewer line north of Second Street, the Carver Street sanitary sewer line. The reason you can't do that now is because essentially we have to match the flow lines. We, we wouldn't want to put a sump in a sanitary sewer in order to just, just let it fill up, so that would have to be pumped out. Or if you wanted to, if you wanted to make it work so that you could put that manhole, let's say, in that intersection of Second Street and Carver Street at the depth you would need to make it work in the future, you'd have to probably chase that grade back, probably at least down to First Street. And being that we don't know what the plan is for that, it might not make sense to do that at this time. And then also, with that said, if you're gonna reroute the san, or the, the storm sewer to the west, you're gonna be tearing up that intersection anyways, because you're gonna have to install a storm manhole to accommodate that reroute, because there is no storm, storm sewer in that intersection at this time. The water main improvements we're proposing are to replace all iron pipe with eight-inch PVC. The replacement of those four-inch lines would bring those into compliance with current standards. We're proposing to replace hydrants and valves, and there again, replace the services to the right-of-way, including the curb stops. The storm sewer improvements, we're proposing to replace those with 10-inch pipe, or, excuse me, 12-inch pipe. And then, to the extent possible, possible, we would try to design those to meet that, that 10-year design, design, or design storm event. But being that all the storm sewer in this project area is on the very upstream end of those storm sewer segments, there might be some limitations due to availability of depth and being able to get, you know, the grades that we would need to provide that, that 10-year storm event. And there again, if we were able to, to design them to meet a 10-year storm event, you might not see those, see that drainage improvement until the downstream mains are upsized, or whatever, whatever would need to be done to, to also bring those into compliance with the 10-year design storm. We were able to provide a little bit of help as far as maybe accommodating a future reroute of the sanitary, or, excuse me, the storm sewer, in the event that DFA would expand. And to do this, we're proposing to kinda reconfigure that storm sewer in the intersection of Second Street and Hennepin Street. What we would do is we would place, install a manhole in Second Street that all of those catch basins in that intersection would drain to, and then a pipe from that new manhole would then connect to the existing storm sewer system that flows south down Hennepin Street. And then, in the event that a reroute would be necessary, you could essentially connect to that new manhole, and then divert it west down Second Street, and then you could abandon that line that, that then connects to the existing system. So if that weren't to be done as part of the project, and, and you'd have to reroute it in the future, you'd have to tear up that whole intersection and replace all that storm sewer. So it seems to me a good solution to accommodate a potential expansion of DFA and abandonment of that line. Whether or not that happens, it would still, it would still function well. As I mentioned before, we're proposing to install subdrain behind curb, which is practice the city has been using on, on the past projects. As I mentioned, it would help to prevent frost heaving, which would reduce maintenance and increase the life of the street. Services would be provided for each property for sump pump discharges, and then these subdrains would then connect to the catch basins, which would provide the outlet. The exception to this would be Carver Street between Second Street and Third Street. You could install the subdrain, and essentially, it would be offline, because there's nowhere currently for it to outlet. If that storm sewer were diverted west down Second Street and storm sewer was placed in that intersection, then you could connect those subdrains to that storm sewer at that time. But in the meantime, there would be no outlet for it, so it would essentially just be underground and, and offline, essentially. So that's basically it for the utilities. For the street improvements, we're proposing to replace the streets to the existing geometric dimensions, which would be essentially a full-depth bituminous street reconstruction. Casaw 32 would likely need to be a 10-ton design, because it is a county road. We assume that would be four and a half inches of bituminous pavement, six inches of classified base, 18 inches of sand subbase, and then underneath that would be a geotexile fabric. For Carver Street, we anticipate that would be a seven-ton design, which would be three and a half inches of bituminous pavement. We're anticipating five inches of aggregate base and 12 inches of sand subbase, and that would be similar to the street sections that have been installed on the last couple residential projects. And then with that, we, we would, we included new concrete curb and gutter, aprons, and sidewalks. A few other considerations, we did not complete a full environmental review of the project area. However, we did do a cursory review of the MPCA, What's in My Neighborhood. It's an online app, online application that the MPCA has. And it does show, and, which is kinda obvious, that there are underground storage tanks at the Winthropse Store. There was, it was reported as a leak site in 1990, but it did receive site closure in 1993. That site closure doesn't necessarily mean that there's no contaminated material left, it just means that if it is present, it was not believed to pose a threat to public health or the environment. So in that area during construction, there should be some careful observation done to see if there's any signs of maybe some petroleum contamination, maybe some oil sheening, or something like that, if there's some dewatering needed. So with that said, we did not include any soil contamination removal costs in our cost estimate. In the past, the city has said that there might be some abandoned steam lines, excuse me, in the project area. It's unknown if they're insulated with asbestos, but they possibly could be. If they were encountered, those steam pipes, we would recommend having the insulation tested, and then if it did prove to be asbestos, it would need to be properly abated. We did include asbestos abatement costs in the cost estimates, just in case we do, that it seemed like that would be maybe more of a likelihood than running into the contaminated soil, being that they did receive site closure on that, that site. Some other things to consider, some boulevard trees would likely need to be removed or trimmed in the project areas. As I mentioned before, they are causing some damage to the existing infrastructure, including curb and sidewalk. And given the narrow boulevards, there's a, there's a very likelihood that some of those trees would need to be removed, if not, if not most. Not only to facilitate construction, but also to prevent future damage to the new, the new infrastructure. There are some private utilities in the area that would likely need to be relocated, be it a gas line or electrical line, like a service line or something like that, maybe a television line. We did assume that the streetlights would be replaced. The cost of those could vary depending on the style the city chose. Something the city may wanna consider is, do they wanna have the same-style light in a residential area, and then maybe a more historical type light in the downtown area? It's just something the city would need to consider if, if the project moved forward. As part of the study, we did consider several, several alternatives, the first of which would be the do-nothing alternative. For the sanitary sewer, basically what that would mean is that you would not solve any of those INI issues that, such as the cracks and things like that, so you'd still be getting that, that infiltration. So you wouldn't help to reduce that problem that the city has. And then, as I mentioned before, the televising was completed in 2015, and there was at least one defect in Carver Street they thought would likely fail within five years, so we're kinda getting to the end of that window. And then, those other two that are likely to fail within 10 to 20 years, they obviously wouldn't, would continue probably to deteriorate. Again, the age is maybe a little bit of a concern, especially for those areas that are over 100 years old. They would likely continue to deteriorate as well. And then, the do-nothing alternative then also would not eliminate the Minnesota 19 crossings. In regards to water main, the do-nothing alternative would mean that those four-inch mains would remain undersized by today's standards. The material and the age of the, or the assumed age, excuse me, of the pipe suggests it may be nearing the end of its design life, and, excuse me, the function of valves and curb stops may not, they may not, may not function correctly, correctly during routine maintenance or emergency activities. The storm sewer, as we mentioned, the condition isn't necessarily a concern, but it is undersized by current design standards, so the do-nothing alternative would do nothing to, to, to upsize those or, or give it larger capacity. And then, as I mentioned, the existing layout of the intersection at Second Street and Hennepin Street would not facilitate rerouting if the city would need to do so in the future. Regarding the streets in general, they're in fair-to-good condition, so they're maybe not a huge concern at this point. There does get to be a tipping point that, you know, down the road, where it might not, might not make sense, or might not be the best use of the city's money if they do deteriorate to a point to continue to maintain those roads. I guess I couldn't give you maybe a good estimate on how long that might be, because the city does do a fairly good job of seal coating and things like that, so they, they do a good job of maintenance. But there again, the sidewalk in, in some areas is very bad, and some of those curb ramps may not be out of, maybe out of compliance with AD requirements, so the do-nothing alternative would do nothing to fix those issues. In regards to cost effectiveness, if the utility work were done, it's generally more cost-effective to do street improvements at that time, because you save mobilization costs and maybe some redundant street improvement costs, if you have to come back and do the street later. We also looked at rehabilitation as, as a possibility. For the sanitary sewer, there are some things that would need to be corrected, such as segs and protruding taps, and possibly even the offset joint before you could do some kinda trenchless method. And it would not allow for abandonment of the Minnesota 19 sanitary sewer crossings. In regards to water main, storm sewer, and, and the streets, really, the reasons for not doing that would be generally the same as the do-nothing alternative. And then, the sanitary sewer rerouting, as, as we've mentioned, or as I mentioned, we're proposing to move forward with that for a few different reasons. The city has kind of identified it as something they'd like to see done. There are those heavy deposits that are in, in the existing crossings, and it's likely they've only gotten worse with time, and will continue to get worse. Another plus is that eliminating, or basically being allowed to abandon those crossings now would eliminate the need to repair or replace them later. If, if it was repaired or replaced later during a Minnesota, let's say, a Minnesota 19 improvement project, it might not be as big a deal, but if you, if you have to do something outside of MINDOT's, MINDOT's timeline, the city might incur additional street improvement or detouring costs. And essentially, it just allows the city to be proactive versus reactive to MINDOT's scheduling. Moving on to the project design phase, if, if the project does move forward, we would recommend getting some soil boardings done to make sure that the, the soil underneath is suitable for road and utility support, and then we'd also ask them for payment recommendations to make sure that the, the sections that we have proposed at this time are suitable. In addition, we would have to seek out some permits and approvals, MPCA sanitary sewer extension permit. The Minnesota Department of Health would have to do a plan review of the water main. We need a construction stormwater permit. We would need a Sibley County grading and utility permit. And we would likely need to get a MINDOT right-of-way permit, probably just a miscellaneous work permit, being that we would have probably very little work that would be, be done in, in the MINDOT right-of-way. It's also possible that MINDOT would require sand filling of the existing sanitary crossings if they are to be abandoned, and we have included that in the estimate as well. As far as rights of way and easements, we think that a majority of the work would be completed within city, county, or state right-of-way, but it's possible some temporary easements may be necessary to facilitate construction, such as stockpiling of, of soil and things like that. As far as staging of construction goes, the contractor would need to maintain access to the properties, which probably won't be that big of a deal if this, for this project, because most properties do have alley access, or they have access off of Pleasant Street, or, excuse me, Pleasant Avenue. It is, is anticipated that the county would require a detour plan for, for Casaw 32 as part of the plans, and then there would be some coordination of temporary utility services, and then also transferring from the existing to the new utilities. In regard, regards to project funding, we anticipate that the project would be funded largely through a bond issuance, which would be paid back with property taxes, utility funds, and special assessments. If special assessments are used, they are mandated by Minnesota Statute 429, which includes preparation of this feasibility, or feasibility report as one of the first steps. The Casaw 32 portion of the project would be eligible for county cost participation, which we have included in the estimates based on the current Sibley County Municipal Construction Cost Participation Policy for State 8 highways and county roads, which we have estimated their participation at 334,000, approximately 334,500. Now there again, that actual cost participation may vary depending upon the availability of county funds. So with that, we did put together a preliminary estimate, includes soft costs such as geotechnical analysis and testing, engineering, construction services, and things of that nature. So things outside of just the construction itself. These costs, the cost estimate was based on recent bid results in the area, primarily the, the Gibbon Project, which we bid this year. But since then, we have noticed some concrete prices, not in this area, but, but elsewhere have risen, so there's the possibility that those, those costs may rise between now and, when the project, if it moves forward, were, were let. So with that said, we did come to a total project cost with soft cost at 1.974 million, approximately. And then with, assuming that, that full county cost, cost participation would be available, the city portion would be 1.64 million, approximately. Regarding the special assessments, they were calculated with guidance from the city and based on past assessment practices. They were calculated assuming 25% of the total street costs assessed with utilities, or, that 25% of the total street costs would be assessed with utilities paid for by their respective funds. They were calculated on a unit basis, with one unit for frontage and a half unit for side frontage. The only exception being the first Angel Caluthan property with the church and the, and the home, which was calculated as having two units of frontage due to its large lot size. And as I understand it, the parsonage is not being used, I guess, as a parsonage. The frontage side was based on the address side of the property, and the methodology that was used is consistent with previous street and utility projects that the city has done in, in the recent past. The City of Winthropse Special Assessment Policy does allow for financial assistance, assistance from an outside source to be used first to reduce the city cost of the improvement. But in the past, namely with, with First Street, the city has said, or the First Street feasibility study we put together a couple years ago, the, the city has said that they might consider taking some of that county cost participation money and possibly using it to, to lower folks' assessments. So with, with that in mind, we did prepare two preliminary assessment rolls. So the first, assuming the county cost part- So the first, assuming the county cost participation money would be used to reduce the city cost, the estimated assessed amount of the project would be 310,674. Using the county cost participation to reduce the assessed amount for the property owners, that assessed amount would be approximately $230,000. In the report, I think I, I wrote that I would recommend before the improvement hearing were held that, that the city should decide how they would allocate those funds from the county if they were, if they were available. But as I've thought it through, I guess I would recommend, excuse me, that if improvement hearing were called, that the city would present the higher assessment amounts just for the simple fact that we don't know yet if those county funds are available. And it's always easier to bring the assessments down than it is to bring them up. So if, I think I should, I think, I think it's 10% if they, if your preliminary assessments are 10% lower than what the actual assessment would be, they generally recommend holding a second improvement hearing. So presenting a larger amount would help prevent that in the future. And then it would give the city some time to, I guess, decide how they want to allocate those funds if, if they are available. We anticipate the assessments would appear on the 2021 property tax statements. And the next steps in the project, if, if it moves forward, would be for the city to receive this report by resolution, call for an improvement hearing, which would then require them to issue the required notices and hold the improvement hearing. And then if, if it decides to move forward from that point, the next step would be to pass a resolution, ordering the improvements and preparing plans and specifications. So in conclusion, we do believe that the, the repairs are necessary, feasible and cost effective, cost effective from an engineering perspective. And we recommend that the city receive the feasibility study and order, an improvement hearing if it intends to move forward with the project. Are there any questions?
So what are you saying? The county doesn't participate?
Yep.
We just pick up that cost? Or we don't do that street?
It'd be, it would be entirely up to you.
Well, once it's passed tonight, I'm going to talk to Tim Becker. If you guys proceed just forward tonight, I will send a copy of the feasibility study to Tim Becker and talk to him about it. He knows we're thinking about it, so it's not like he, it's not on his radar at all.
Passing this resolution tonight, it just means we, we'd still go forward, but we still aren't obligated to, during the project, we'd get some other costs there.
And I can find out how long it would take Tim to get us an answer on whether or not they're going to participate.
I know how long it takes them to do a speed limit sign.
Well, he, you know, they were anticipating some costs on First Street, so.
Yeah, so he set aside because we give him a heads up.
Yeah.
So council, what would you like to do? Would you like to proceed with this?
It's over.
Second.
Motion made by Dale to proceed with the project. Seconded by Julie, is there any further discussion?
That's also to approve this resolution.
Oh, and to approve the resolution.
So that'd be to set the improvement hearing for the next council meeting then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We'll set the improvement hearing for the June 3 meeting, assuming we could have some costs from Tim by then, you know. If, if he can't, can we put a, push it back a month?
You certainly could, yep.
I think it'd be better to have those, have some information from them before we go ahead with the project.
The next thing on here is feasibility study proposal for the wastewater project. I saw something sitting on her desk here.
Yeah, that was, I just got it this morning. This is.
Troy, have you had a chance to take a look at this?
No, no, but I've been in on the meeting.
Okay. So my understanding, if we went ahead with this feasibility study, we're looking at 49,000?
We're proposing to do it basically in two parts. The first phase would more or less just take a look at the water balance side of it to kind of take a look at is, is it something from the water balance side of it, is it feasible for the project to, to be done? And then the second phase would then take a closer look at more of the financials and things like that. So it's kind of a two-step process. You wouldn't want to authorize the phase two portion unless you knew that it was feasible, correct? So that's, that's why we went with this approach.
And this project is to look at a water plant that would be shared?
Well, it'd be, as I understand it, it would be a city-owned facility, but it would essentially, essentially be kind of a first of its kind, at least in the Midwest, because the idea would be for the city to treat its water to such a standard that it could be reused by, by Heartland Corn products. And then potentially it could take also, I mean, depending on how the feasibility of it worked out, it could potentially take some, some wastewater, some are all wastewater from DFA, which they currently have their own treatment facility. And I think their permit's getting updated or getting revised. So depending on how their, their new limits come out, it might make more sense, depending on how the numbers work out for them, if, if they had the option to, to discharge some wastewater, some are all wastewater to the city versus updating their existing plant. So that's kind of what the idea is, to take a look at kind of all these different scenarios, I guess, to see what's feasible and, and is it feasible? And then if it is feasible, the second phase would be to take a look at more the numbers.
Does anybody have any comments on that? Are you somewhat familiar with this?
I guess I don't understand the whole project.
Is it really?
Give a brief overview on what it would be.
It's for the DFA and for Heartland.
Yep.
Yeah, but.
Because we're eventually going to have to start dealing with salt discharge.
Okay.
All right, so this will kind of help us offset that too.
That's, that's what we're going to take a look at, right? Yep, and then, then another, another issue is, yep, yep, theographer capacity issue. So if you can take some of that water, let's say that Heartland is buying from the city essentially and replace it with reuse water, then that frees up all that gallonage that they're buying from the city, you know, to distribute to other customers essentially. So that's one thing that would be looked at as part of the study too.
So can we, I'll entertain a motion for the first phase of the project.
Which is?
The 15,000 to see if this project would even work.
At least we get some numbers. Figure out what we'll charge for that water.
Right, that, the, the number side of it, the, the money side of it, I guess, would come in that phase two. So the phase one would be looking more at the, more at the wastewater treatment side of it.
Do we, do we have any idea how much water we get from Gaylord?
How much they pull?
How much they pull?
About half their load comes out of the wells.
Yep, yeah, I don't think I have those numbers with me.
Wasn't it pulling something?
Yeah, 120 million gallons of water each year, which sounds, I'm not sure if that's their total.
So this would alleviate a lot of our problems and some of the problems that the other businesses are dealing with.
So they're kind of willing to participate in it too?
It was originally talked to be paid for, kind of setup to be paid for, kind of like the water tower thing was?
So they'd be offsetting a lot of the costs.
Because we're going to wind up having to put a plant in 20 years anyway.
Right, and then, and then with the part of the phase two, we would, we would take a look at are there some funding sources out there? Being that it is what I would, what I would say and maybe what, what the agencies would say is a green project, being that you're taking water and reusing it, there might be some, some funds available, available to help, you know, fund a project of this nature.
So again, I'll entertain a motion if we want to move ahead with the phase one.
I'm going to move ahead with the one.
So is a motion made by Julie?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move on. Thank you, Brian. The resolution requesting a speed study. Robin? Dave?
What's that?
1915, right?
I have a lot of people that want their name on it.
Yeah.
Well, I originally started, when we turned into our driveway, I think you all know where
we live, right on the west end of town, turn into our driveway, it's 60 miles an hour going past there. If we're stopped waiting to turn into our driveway, you'd never know if the person behind you is going to stop. More than likely, they're going to go around you, which is illegal. But the fear is, are they going to stop? Because my son actually had his side mirror clipped by a truck going around him. So I called the state and he said, well, you could request a speed study. He said, but more than likely, they'll never change the speed limit. He didn't tell me that it would probably get moved closer to town. He didn't tell me that. He said, you could drive around, turn right by the industrial park and come around by UFC and go into your driveway that way. I'm like, well, yeah, that's not going to happen.
Impressed with the state, where are we?
So I talked to Jenny, Jenny contacted them, and that's where it came out that it could actually get moved closer to Winthrop, which is not what we want. We don't want that. But realistically, what it comes right down to it is if there's enforcement out there, it'll stop. The speed, I mean, they're hitting 60 way before they ever hit that 60 mile an hour speed limit. So I mean, if really, if it just was enforced, if somebody's out there ticketing people that are speeding like they're supposed to be doing.
Have you seen anybody out there recently?
No.
Okay.
Have not seen, I could, the last time we saw a cop, it was the sheriff or the police chief, and she made an illegal turn and we almost could have hit her. So.
Because I, the day you came here, I got your email, I did talk to her about it.
No, have not seen anybody out there at all.
Is that city limits out there?
We are in city limits. We're annexed in.
On Keel's side, there are city limits, there the edge. On the, on the other side, Heartland is city limits, so.
And the jake break signs are at Heartland.
Right, and that's, that's my other issue is since the speed, well, it's even before the speed limit was changed, the jake breaking is out of control, but it's even worse now. We made a complaint last year with the police. They never handed out a ticket. They contacted, because we knew who the truck driver was who was like clockwork. They contacted him. It got better for a short time, but I saw him go past the other day just as loud as ever. And again, the sign is way out there by Heartland. I think it needs to be moved closer to town and maybe needs to be a little more visible because it's not a very big sign. Talked to JB Lures, the drive-in, Napa, Russ's, Councilman DeMellheim.
I get it from both.
That, and I've talked to somebody that lives in this middle of city of town, of town. They can hear the jake breaking coming into town. It's out of control.
It's not just the jake breaking, if I could? It's the trucks using the hill on the way out of town to get up to speed. They're doing 60 before they get to DG. They hit that hill and they floor it. And then they loop. I watched, I'm not going to give you the name, but I watched one truck go from the ethanol plant to the elevator three times in an hour and a half, dropping jake break all the way from their place to the hotel.
Yeah, so.
I question that speed limit, not, not expert on, but just how was it side by side? It should be 30 through town. Now, when you get out to industrial, it should have to be 45 for business in industrial. And we still got business to us and UFC, but at 60 mile an hour speed limit, right in front of UFC's office. So like I say, they're already hitting 60 before they have left our business area.
What, the, the reason that the, I, I think we should proceed with the speeds study, but I also think we should add 15 to it because this started a year ago. I'm sure you folks back there heard it a year ago, because that's about when I heard it, when they changed 15.
Well.
The drawback is when they come in 15, I don't know if they'll do it. But what's going to happen on 19 is they're going to look at the width of that road, the width of those shoulders, the turn lanes that are, are there, they're not going to consider farther out. They're going to say, due to the width of that road and there's no traffic on 57, move it closer to town.
But we can't go back.
But we can't go back. That's the problem.
If that's the way the speed study comes in, we have to follow it.
So I don't, I think we really need to get some enforcement.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't want to, that to happen.
Get the DOT trucks out there. Maybe it's time to start weighing rigs.
In front of our house, it's 60, right in front of UFC, between UFC and Dave's auto, it hit 60. But I can tell you, they're going 60 by DG already. So they're already geared up and they're probably going 65 past our house.
If you want to see it, go sit in the DG parking lot and just watch. And you will watch them come down and floor it right in front of Stefan and Joanne's house, going down that hill. And you got a Peterbilt with dual stacks? You can hear that thing for miles. And it goes on all day and all night.
Right, so that's, I mean, I don't want to request the speed study. I don't want that to happen. So I would just ask that our police chief, I wish she would have been here, is enforcing the rules.
Back to the sheriff's office. See if they can't do some control during the day and the.
Why wouldn't you want a speed study?
Because I don't want that 60 mile an hour move closer to Winthrop. I want it moved towards.
You want it to go backwards?
Yes, but.
Why can't they do that?
When they look at it, Pete, they're going to come look at the count of vehicles that go through there. And they're going to look at the mix of the neighborhood, you know, where's the houses and where's the turn lanes? And that's what they'll make their decision based upon. And they might, I think they probably will, move it closer because of the width of that road, the turn lanes.
So when they come into town, as soon as they hit Dave's auto, it's 45. What are they going to do, put that 45 on top of the hill by?
They would probably put it halfway up the hill, yeah. Because they can't have, it has to be 30, 500 feet. So the closest or the farthest, 500 feet from Joanne and Stefan's, that greenhouse, that, that would be all the closer that the 45 could make it. It's like, it's sort of a 57, that's why that one got moved out, it's 500 feet from the last house. So if another house goes in, it'll move another 500 feet, another 500 feet. But that's, that's what'll set the limit. It could take it all the way up to, and that would be about halfway between DG and that house.
I think just if it's enforced.
Yeah, I think what we need to do, we will talk to them.
Because you know, going into Henderson or Gaylord, you know you don't speed into either one of those towns. So I can't Winthrop be the same way. And if they do, hey, it's a profit center for the city.
Right.
Gaylord's worse.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, someone else in our family knows that too.
I got a special invitation on Saturday.
I'll talk to Karen, I'll talk to the county and state patrol, see if we can't get some more.
And can we move that noise?
Well, the problem with the jake breaking signs is Heartland Corn owns them. They bought them. So, and we can't have two sets, because I've talked to the state about this already. We can either buy those from Heartland and move them closer and not have any out there.
Because they're not jake breaking out there.
So, or, and which I can certainly do.
That's what we have to do.
And we might have to have Karen go out and talk to the scales guys again at work the last time, so.
Can you go talk to Heartland, see if we can buy those signs from Heartland?
Well, I'm sure they were, you know, they put them up because there were neighbors out there complaining across from them. And they wanted to be good neighbors, so they put the signs up. I can ask them, I can't guarantee that they'll.
Yeah, they paid out of pocket to put the signs up.
Right, we would have to reimburse them for the sign, which is not a problem.
And it's a MinDOT rule that you can't have two sets?
Yes.
Well, that's a silly rule.
Lots of MinDOT rules. They have lots of silly rules, yes.
So at this time, doesn't sound like we want to do the resolution. We want to talk about enforcement. Make sure it gets enforced. Stay in touch with us, let us know if it's.
Like I said, I've, I've found that license plate numbers in the county work real well. They, they seem to act really well when I give them a license.
Well, they're going too fast to get a license plate.
Well, I got a lawn chair, so I just sit there and write them down, but.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, and Dee is not going to happen?
What, now what, who is, just, who's, who is this lady?
It had to do with the sewer action.
They had a sewer line collapse and they wanted to assess it like we've done with some other people in the past. But they decide, they found a different way to finance it, so. They didn't like our three-year plan.
Cheryl, did you want to?
Could have given them five.
Yeah.
I thought it was Mrs. Witzel property on Brown Street.
Okay, Cheryl, you've got.
I'm here to talk about the resolution regarding the Winthrop ambulance and a checkbook that, a private checkbook that we had for our service. I understand that the checkbook is not in compliance with what the city deems for a city department, so the Winthrop ambulance has, as of today, signed that checkbook over, closed the account. The funds have been given to the city to put into a money market, separate, just for continuity purposes for the members of the ambulance. That's what we would like, so that we can just keep track, see, you know, be able to easier track that money, easily track that money. continuity purposes for the members of the ambulance. That's what we would like, so that we can just keep track, see, you know, be able to easier track that money, easily track that money. So that's kind of what the resolution that we're asking for.
And that shouldn't be a problem?
No, I already, well, you signed it, so.
I hope it's not a problem.
It's open.
And did you also have a request for something for the?
Yes.
Funds fund, yes.
So this is our fiftieth anniversary. We have put some plans in works the end of last year and the beginning of this year. The funding that we were going to use for buying the Frisbees and buying the cups and the parade stuff, I guess, is what basically it comes down to. We now don't have that funding. We're just requesting that some of that fund, some of the money in this money market would be available to use for that kind of thing.
So, yeah, just to continue with our plans, what we had already started last year, we've been working on this fiftieth for over a year now, so those items have not been purchased, but we still would like to continue with what our original plan was regarding the upcoming Farm City Fun Fest and the parade and everything, so.
I don't see an issue with it. Does anybody have a?
And dollar value on that's going to be two thousand or less.
Yeah, we don't have an exact dollar value because nothing is purchased at this point, but just to be able to have access.
Just like that, everything got switched over, so we're in compliance.
So, yeah, so, yeah. I delivered everything to Jenny this morning.
Opened that account, so.
So, yeah.
There could be a penalty for early withdrawal.
Is there any policy going forward, like if they have, you know, a need for those funds? Does it, I would assume it has to be a level where it doesn't have to go to the council if it's?
No, it doesn't really, I mean.
It's set up like the Pittsburgh.
Yeah, it's donation money, they can do what they want with it, within the guidelines of how cities can spend money.
Exactly.
All right, is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Oh, thank you very much. That was a lot. We're going to have RS fiber come up now.
Need a motion to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Motion made by Julie. Seconded to this. Seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll hear what RS fiber, whoever you want to come up here. We're going to wait till Dale gets back. Then we'll get started. You can come up and sit down, that's all right.
Those chairs are pink.
Are we going to want to hear this? All right.
So for anybody who doesn't know who I am, I'm Jake Ricky. I'm on the RS Fiber Cooperative Board of Directors. And as much as we wanted to come here tonight and tell you that everything is resolved and we're ready to move forward, the attorneys have identified another issue that ultimately is going to require us to go back through the reapproval process with the JPB, with Winthrop City Council and Buffalo Lake. And it came to light after, so after the JPB made their initial approval of the loan documents, it came to light when Jenny Bolton and the Scher's attorneys started working on the amendment to the loan agreement and the intercreditor agreement with the JPB. And they identified a disconnect between the way we understood the term sheet and the way that they understood the term sheet that was presented at the JPB. And what these, do you want me to keep going?
I can jump in if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
Shannon Sweeney, financial advisor to the Joint Powers Board. Ultimately, the conversation focused on, you know, we had two business points in the loan agreement that were approved. One was that payments would be deferred in the current agreement until such time that a debt test was met, that being earnings before income tax and depreciation had to be one times the, or three to one rate, in a three to one ratio with outstanding senior secured debt. So when senior secured debt was reduced to the level that met this debt test, that was within the document that you approved, at that time, payments would resume on the current loan. It wouldn't be until such time that the senior secured lender, HBC Scher's, was refinanced that those past due payments would be considered for repayment. That's what was approved. Now, HBC Scher's says that they approved at their board level after many discussions was that any payments not made during the current period would be forgiven for accounting purposes, and that payments would resume when the debt test was met, and that at some point, if they were refinanced out of the project, they didn't care if the cooperative and the Joint Powers Board at that time negotiated a new agreement associated with the repayment of the unpaid principal and interest between now and when they resume payments. So they feel that having that unpaid deferred balance on the books makes it more difficult to refinance them out of the project. Their goal is to be refinanced out of the project. They aren't a lender, and they don't want to be a lender, you know, for any longer than they have to be. And so what's likely going to come back to you for consideration is that the loan agreement will indicate that payments not made during this period between now and when the debt test is met will be considered forgiven, and that at some point in the future, when the debt test is met and payments resume and HBC is refinanced out of the deal, that the cooperative, you know, has the ability to make a pledge at that time for the repayment of that amount.
Yep.
But the HBC Scher's will not allow that to be essentially a deferred amount because it will show up on the balance sheet between now and when they're refinanced out of the project, and they feel it's more difficult than to get them out of the project.
Yeah, and I've talked it over with our board of directors, and our board is absolutely willing to enter into a new loan agreement after HBC Scher's has financed out and resume those back payments to the JPB. So it's still, we are still willing to make the city's whole with the total debt there. And we're willing to pass a resolution to reflect that as well.
Was there a limit of time as to when they would be able to start making those payments, the original, they thought it was like eight or nine years?
That was, they've done a projection based on adding twenty-five new customers per month, net new customers. Under that projection, they would begin making full payments in 2028. They have characterized that as a conservative projection.
That was when the three to one EBITDA test is projected to be met.
Met, yes.
So if we can grow faster than that, that would shrink that timeframe. And we could resume payments quicker. And the sooner we resume payments, the less would end up on a new loan agreement after Scher's paid out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Cass, I'm concerned with giving up the right of any type of payments for that first night. I hear what you're saying, that RS fiber, but we legally have nothing.
To be clear, they're still obligated to resume payments on the current loan when the debt test is met. It's just the unpaid amounts between now and when they meet the debt test that you wouldn't have as firm of an obligation. It wouldn't be deferred, it would be forgiven for now until such time that we enter into a new agreement after HBC is financed out of the deal.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, this really is sort of a nuanced change to the agreement that we signed. The practical application for the city is really not that different in that before, if that agreement didn't go through, the city was not going to get any of those funds back at any point?
We, yeah, we still believe that this is the best path for the cities to recover funds. We.
Two, three, four, five.
We've met, we've met with Nuvera, we sat down with Danny Bush.
I've heard about that, yeah.
We sat down with Bill Otis and Barb, CFO from Nuvera, I'm forgetting her, Barb Bornhaft. We sat down with him, and, you know, we basically said, okay, let's talk about the offer that you guys have. And they responded with, well, we just wanted to have a conversation about what was going on, and we'd be interested in looking at some of your assets, and that was about it.
Shannon, can you explain the difference between, the difference for the city?
Mm-hmm.
In what was approved.
What was approved was a deferment of those payments between now and when the debt test is met. So for bookkeeping purposes, that amount accrues and shows up on their balance sheet as a long-term obligation.
Okay.
What they're likely going to be asked to do is to consider that a forgiveness in the current period, so that it isn't on their balance sheet as an obligation. And at such time that HBC is refinanced out of the project, cooperative is then able to make a new commitment to the group in order to pay those unpaid balances.
That would be an obligation from the cooperative to HBC?
No. No, it'd be an obligation from the cooperative to the Joint Powers Board by resolution at best, because anything more firm than that is going to be a balance sheet obligation that shows they have this additional debt outstanding that HBC Scher's feels impairs their ability to refinance them out of the deal. They don't want to be a long-term lender for any longer than they need to be, which they've made absolutely clear, so. But they also don't want to see the project go to default, and so that's why they're at the table in this discussion.
So they're really not forgiving anything, is what you think?
Well, they want to forgive it on paper, but basically give us their word.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the way that Bob feels.
Yep. That's true.
And you have to meet with Joint Powers Board, they have to approve this first, and then we go back to our council meeting to approve it.
And as part of clarification, they're not asking, they're not asking for forgiveness of the entire bond amount. It's the amount between, or until?
It's the unpaid, it's the unpaid loan payments until they meet the debt test and resume payments.
Correct. How long will that be?
They've projected 2028, which is based on that twenty-five net new customers per month.
We hope that, we hope that that can be sooner. It's all, it all based, it's all based on the three to one debt test.
Who does that? Is that something?
We would monitor it.
Who could change that? Could they pick up, could they take on more debt and suddenly, or buy equipment or something like this, and suddenly that, we're never going to get our payments?
I'd say that the, we are approving a specific amount of senior secured lending, which they would have to come back to us again to increase. So they couldn't take on a huge amount of additional senior secured debt without our approval. What would impair it is if they don't meet that twenty-five net new customers per month. You know, that's, that's the biggest part of the, is adding customers to the network to make it viable.
Okay.
How was that going?
Well, the first year and a half went really well.
What's current customer count?
I think it's just shy of twenty-two hundred is about where we were as of two weeks ago.
You're the, you're the, you're the co-op chairman, right?
Vice chair.
That's a number you should know. And we've, this is not the first time we've asked you that question.
I knew it two weeks ago, as of April fifteenth.
And you're here tonight again, and you don't know. Mr. Lawagi, do you know the number?
No, I don't.
I can have it to you by tomorrow, Neil.
Yeah, it's almost that way.
All right, so moving forward, you need to go to the Joint Powers Board first, and then they'll come back to us.
Right, so there's no action required tonight, it's just, we wanted.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what's happening.
Yep.
And when is the Joint Powers Board meeting?
We haven't said it yet. Waiting to discuss that with the chair. I mean, this is new material as of late Friday, so. Yep. We were trying to resolve it without having to require additional approval, and we just weren't, it's a material change to the deal, it has to come back to you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for them?
I'm more than willing to take any phone calls if anybody wants to get ahold of me answering questions.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. The resolution adopting Winthrop's interconnection process. Do you want to talk about that, Jenny? Thank you.
This is a new process that the state is requiring all electric utilities to pass, requiring interconnections basically for solar, if businesses want to hook up. We have to adopt a process and then the policy, and they're both basically the same. It just outlines, and I had a summary in, it outlines, let's see, the two resolutions go together and required to pass them to be in compliance with Minnesota statutes regarding net metering. The short version is there are three options for facilities with forty KW service or less. They can be, they can average their utility energy rate, they can have simultaneous purchase and sale billing rate, they can do rollover credits, or they can do time-of-day purchase rate, but we don't offer time-of-day purchase rate right now. So it'll depend on, if they generate more electricity than what they're using, we have to have a policy in place on how we're going to handle that, that electricity that we get back on the grid. And this is that policy. This is a policy that was given to us by MMPA, our provider. Any service that's over a hundred KW will negotiate a rate with us and MMPA regarding that.
And it's really not new either.
No, but the state's.
State is in there now.
Yes, the state is involved now, so.
Can we, do you need?
Separate motion, yeah.
Separate, okay. I'll entertain a motion for the first one, adopting Winthrop's interconnection process.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Pete, seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Entertain a motion for the resolution adopting Winthrop's policy on net metering interconnection facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dale, seconded by Pete. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Pete, did you want to say something about this data?
Well, Jenny and I were both in a meeting. Jenny, Jenny likes to talk, but in a nutshell, they.
Don't you let's take notes, Pete. Get it right.
Basically, in a nutshell.
Pete just threw in the glass.
No, basically, in a nutshell, they say we need a substation, we need a, we need land available, and we need utilities, and they said, it's got to be almost ready to go and.
Yeah, shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready. So I guess they're asking us for a commitment as to.
They're in the, I talked to their attorney again, since I like to talk. I talked to their attorney again Wednes, Tuesday or Wednesday, and he asked again if we had any land. He asked if, you know, where and how readily available it was. The only land we have that we don't even have is we have a first right of refusal on.
We have the business park.
That's not big enough. They need ten to forty acres.
Ten to forty acres.
And that's only seven.
They need near a power substation?
No, they'd be willing to help us build a substation. They'd be willing to help us purchase the land as well.
Putting it in a residential neighborhood? I got a problem with that.
That Clockman land is residential?
Both sides and across the street.
Well, it would be further back off of the.
Okay.
But I, you don't have to do anything.
No, I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
But I don't want to see it in a residential neighborhood.
But we need ten to forty acres, and I don't think they're ready to sell.
Okay.
I don't.
I'm just, because when I saw the substation, I thought, well, maybe we should put it outside of town on one and upgrade that substation all in one shot.
Well, the thinking.
Just an idea.
The thinking of a substation, though, not only because of that, is to put it on the other end so you have a loop.
Loop, yeah.
If this one went down, maybe that one.
I just, I look at that business park and I.
Yeah.
But I don't think the Clockman, to me, I think they're looking for a forty acre parcel, really.
Yeah, and that's not even 40 acres.
Could it bump, could it, would ethanol plant? Let them go out on the sub backside of that?
That would be a town, it has to be in the service territory, and that's not in our service territory.
Yeah, if an oil plant's not our service territory?
No.
That's serviced by McLeod Co-op Power.
Really?
Mm-hmm. We did not have the capacity to service that when they built that. Yeah.
Well, it wasn't that, it wasn't our territory, and they wouldn't.
They wanted like $10 million for that.
I didn't know that.
But the basic thing is, is like I said, we've been working on getting data centers out in this area. And they're just saying is, we're willing to go, but you've got to be ready. There's no.
Because I think the county would fight you on that with their land zoning.
I told Jenny.
Pete really wants it, so I put it on the agenda.
I didn't even need that much room for it, you know?
Yeah.
That's a lot of room.
They don't have anything in mind yet, but they want to have all the land and everything ready to go. So when they find a data center that wants to come.
They can jump.
Yeah, because apparently.
They're looking.
They're looking, and those people who own the data centers, who build them, it's like a production line. What do you have, what do you have?
It's like Amazon.
Yeah, exactly.
What do you give us?
So the question is, do we want to proceed to look for a 40-acre parcel?
Well, the thing is, is do you want a data center in town, basically, at some point? Yes or no?
You want a business.
I mean, they'd have a huge load, but it would, you know, it would be a lot of work to, it would cost money to even get out, you know, get to the table. It would cost money, I think.
So as far as council's concerned, I mean, I could see that as generating some income, though. I mean, absolutely, if it's a huge load. Do we want to proceed with this? Do you want to direct Jenny to look for some possible areas? Not sure where.
Because it has to be in our service territory, we're very limited anywhere.
How far out does our service territory go east and west?
East is to Keels, and then back over there.
By Genekes.
Backs over, yeah, back with Genekes up, yeah. What about west?
Heartland, and then just, because that fertilizer plant is not in our service territory.
You're talking about. Highway 15.
Highway 19, or 15. Yeah. Highway 15, yes. That is where it ends.
Well, what about, you know, what you consider in the school? Out on that highway? And access it off the front of the truck? Because they're not going to have a lot of traffic.
It's not right now.
Okay.
And I don't want to say anything because if they find out we're going to think of opening a data center, the prices will.
It's no problem.
The whole thing, the whole thing is that we've always talked about, we're kind of landlocked.
You are, we are.
And that we should expand our city limits, and we never get that. I mean, this is not new because of this project. This has been talked and thrown around for.
Do they still have that orderly annexation for cities where we can move our?
Yeah, but the property isn't the issue. It's the electric service territory part of it.
That's what's killing us.
Yeah.
We don't have anything big enough in our territory.
Not right now.
I guess that kind of answers the question.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm just saying, you know.
Okay. So we're not directing Jenny to go out there?
Okay.
You don't have to talk to anybody, Jenny.
But I like to talk so much.
You can put some signs up out there.
Actually, that was more of a question to everyone. We do not want her to go up. Okay. All right, downtown community park.
Melissa put a little update in her park with the requested budget. That she is looking, what was it, $3,000?
$30,000.
Yeah.
Where's the community park?
Down by Red Rooster there in the Masons, where Tom Miller's plumbing was.
I thought you were talking about the Dairy Queen.
No.
No, this is.
Although I know that's where you'd like it. Or a rain garden or something.
A rain garden, yeah.
She's been working with Amy Martin, the U of M and the Garden Club and the GFW C ladies on this. And they would like to start buying some plants. We do have some money, there's some money in the park budget, there's some money in the maintenance reserves, too.
Have you ever considered that thing for like parking?
Well, there's four, five parking spots there. Those will stay there.
Where are the parking spots?
Right up against Red Rooster, in between the garage and the Red Rooster.
Where the Hanson Drug people used to park, remember?
I would not know it's a parking lot, anyway.
There's lines there and everything.
Is there? I just saw a big camper there or something parked in there. Yeah, there sure is.
Yeah.
There's a piece of junk there.
There's a camper there?
Yeah.
Who's that?
So what are they asking for to?
She was, approve the budget, and so they can go ahead and start buying some plants.
She run it through park?
Yeah, they met, didn't we meet about that a while ago?
I think so.
Yeah. I can't remember what I've read here. I know. I think it has already been approved, but I just wanted to make sure it was approved.
What are you putting in plants?
Yes, it's going to be like a pollinator garden, yeah, like a.
Yeah, they want to have the historical society donate a couple benches.
Yes.
It's going to kind of be like what's over by the drug, the clinic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks nice.
They're going to have like a little waterfall.
Has the garden club got any money?
No, they don't have any money, but they're willing to help maintain it.
Yeah.
And that's half the battle right there.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Julie. Is there a second?
Somebody second it?
Not yet.
Nobody else likes plants?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dale, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All that staring for four votes.
All right, purchase new garbage cans for downtown.
Oh, the downtown garbage cans are pretty nasty. And Gordy and Jesse found these that would be able to be dumped by their trucks. So hopefully, they'd get dumped more than once a year. Their Gaylord Sanitations dump trucks that they, with the arm, they can dump them. And they're $200 each, for eight of them is $1,600. Gordy did not think we would need eight of them, so that would be the most.
Or you need a couple in the park.
Well, we have garbage cans in the park.
You're just talking about downtown here.
About the downtown park.
Oh, yeah, well, the new park, we would need one in the new park.
I'll entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Dale to go ahead and purchase some garbage cans, not to exceed eight. Is there a second? Seconded by Julie, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Parking.
Let's ban it.
Put meters up.
Yeah. Pete, you want to take this one?
I was asked by Dr. Kavan if he could have one or more than one slot in front of his place. Because what's now happening is people bring old people. The one handicapped is over there between the street and the hardware. And so what's happening is, is people are parking their cars in the, using that ramp to the alley, blocking that off.
Enforcement.
So they can get into his place of business. Because there is no access for a handicapped person other than the parking spot, but there's no way.
And in conjunction with that, Roger Osborne asked if we could maybe have a limit, like 30-minute parking along from Main Street to the alley.
That would make sense, yeah.
So that would help alleviate it.
Lot.
Two-hour parking, yeah.
Because there's three that sit there all the time.
I think they're employees.
They are.
So, yeah, either, you know, maybe have a handicap spot for Dr. Kavan and then limit it.
Well, do we have one in front of the drugstore, too?
Yes.
15-minute parking.
No, a handicapped.
Yeah, we do, yep, yep.
But that, too, is not accessible, she goes through the alley, too. I mean, it's not.
But did he say something about a curb cut, too?
Well, I don't know, what do you call that thing?
Yeah, to push a wheelchair, but that might be more difficult.
Ambulance, what are you guys doing? For doing some extra lifts?
Does somebody want to put that in a motion?
What, a handicap sign and?
A handicap sign and the limit to parking.
Two-hour parking from Main to the alley?
Two hours is a long time, too.
Well, that's a lot of parking spots.
Well, that's a, you know. I told you where your parking lot is, you want to make a park lot.
You're the council, you can.
Can I make a suggestion?
You go right ahead.
Can I throw something here? I understand where you're coming from with the time limit. I think it's great, but if we're going to do that, we should probably limit that time. So maybe it's 30-minute parking from 8:00 to 5:00. Because that street's used for a lot of other things from 5:00 o'clock on.
Yeah.
Is that?
Who's going to enforce it?
Well.
That's the problem.
We have four policemen.
We don't technically, but.
Well, three.
Okay, so.
Three.
Yeah, 30 minutes, I don't think is long enough. I think I can see an hour.
Because if you park somewhere, which I should do more often, but you know, you park by the bank, you do your banking, you go up to the drugstore, you walk down to get your mail. It, you can waste.
Geez, everybody's handicapped anyway. I mean, you know, you go to a Walmart, they're all handicapped.
So what you're saying is to put one handicap parking spot.
It's going to be long.
Say next to the alley of the other one is going to be, right? And then.
At some point, though, when we fix those sidewalks, and they're getting there again, we should make cuts there.
Yes, yeah. Okay, and then you're talking about the parking spots from the alley to Main.
From 8:00 to 5:00 is one-hour parking.
Eight to 5:00, one-hour parking.
And yes, we'll have to buy signs.
A handicap spot in front of Kavan. And a handicap sign in front of.
Right by the alley there.
Give me one of those sticks with chalk, I'll mark the tires.
Who's going to paint the street?
Gordy.
Okay, you want to read that back, Jenny?
Yep. Eight to 5:00, one-hour parking from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, correct? Or all week?
What's the doctor's office hours? I mean, line it up with them.
He's only there like three days a week.
Oh, yeah.
He's not there every day.
Well.
Who?
Kavan.
But then they can still get the RS fiber, you know, if they got to go down and pay their bill or whatever, they can use that one for their, the bank, if they have to.
Banks. Yeah, I think Monday through Friday.
Through Friday.
There cuts.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The weekends a little different.
Hey, they got a quilting shop in Givin.
Okay, read that back one more time?
All right, one-hour parking from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. And a handicap sign by the alley spot in front of Kavan. And this is on the south side of the street from the alley to Main.
You could also put a hand, well, it's blue, but everybody parks in that other one, anyway.
The one by the old Sibley Interiors?
Yes.
But they're not open anymore.
Oh, but it's still a handicap spot.
But it would be, for Kavan, it would work better to have a handicap spot closer to his front door.
Well, how far is that alley from the front door? I thought it was pretty low.
It is, but I mean, he's talking about the one they put in up by Woods's there by Sibley Interiors. That one's kind of far away.
Okay, does somebody want to make that a motion?
I will.
Okay, Pete? Pete made the motion, seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Those restrictions are for the whole street?
Nope, just from the alley to Main.
To Main. If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Now on to the lawnmower.
All right, did everybody see the estimate for the lawnmower?
Yes, I gave you guys all a copy of this. The guys have been working very hard.
Is that available on state bid?
Huh?
Is that available on state bid?
It is, but not for this price.
Is it available through that other program we signed up for, the fire department?
No, but not for this price. I know, I know.
I know it's a good price, I'm just asking.
They did look into the HGC pricing and the state bid.
This is from UFC.
Yeah, they've been, well, yeah, and it's even better than the original price.
Will they take the old one on trade?
I think we're going to keep the old one.
As a backup.
Yeah, yep. So we have money in the lawnmower fund for this. This one is an industrial strength lawnmower. It has the best resale value. If we would trade it in, you know, they've researched it. I have all the other bids if anybody wants to see them, but this is the one they want to get.
I sat in on that morning.
That's right, you were here, weren't you?
The total price was 17,919 is what they're asking.
16,999.
What's the cash on delivery, the 920?
They want 920.
Right, so it's still.
The price they started out was with 17,919, but they negotiated them down to 16,999.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
You should get one like I got.
They couldn't afford it because you drive too slow with it.
I'll make a motion, we get the new lawnmower.
Okay, Dale made a motion to approve the, and Julia seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We're really agreeable tonight, aren't we?
All right, city administrator, EDA. I believe we hit everything under new business.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Administrator?
All right, let's see, what did I do this month? This month, we had, we met with the DNR to discuss the observation well. And Troy, Dale, and Kelly, you found a location that we can agree on. I met with Karen Vaz with the Department of Health to discuss the equipment. We can't apply for the grant until September 1st. So we can't buy the equipment until after we apply for the grant. So they'll have to wait before we put that in. We found some used CTs and PTs for the DFA transformer down at Quaddie's. The meter wasn't, they wasn't working until we got those replaced. They didn't want to put new ones in because if they go forward with this expansion, that transformer will be removed. And they're about $6,000 for new, and we got these for 250 apiece. Quaddie's was in town Friday to install them. It sounds like it was quite a project, but they got it done.